Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Hutchinson City Council Meeting for Thursday, December 27, 2018. Approve the council agenda and any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor and council, I guess before I forget, there's one just correction under the consent agenda. Item 7B, that should be January 22, 2019, not 18. So I guess that's our first 18, 19 mistake of the soon to be new year. So otherwise, everything else should be good.
I'll make a motion to approve that with that correction.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by John, to approve the agenda with the corrections. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Gary. The invocation tonight is from Jeez. Good evening.
Good evening. Our most loving heavenly Father, we gather together as citizens and as leaders to discuss the important issues before our community today. We are grateful for the freedoms that you have allotted to us, the freedom to speak, to be represented, to have a say in our government, and also the freedom to worship according to our own conscience. Heavenly Father, we ask a blessing on this assembly today. Please bless our leaders that have been elected, our leaders that have been chosen inside the city government, but also the common citizen, that we can show wisdom and the decisions that we make here today. That we can search for and hear thy Holy Spirit, that we can understand thy will for our community, and how we can help it to grow and to develop in ways that will impact our businesses and our families. And thus we pray in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Next, so pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? I just want to thank everybody that did Christmas stuff over the, for our community. I know there was a lot going on, Santa and a bunch of places. So I'm sure Santa was nice to everyone, so we thank him for that, I guess. John got some new stuff, so.
I got a pair of underwear and a new pair of socks, so I'm good for the year.
There you go. That's good.
I think we should also talk our, thank our city workers for making our city look beautiful this winter. You know, the lights are all up, the square is beautiful, the downtown is beautiful. So thank you to all of them for their hard work.
Very, public comment, citizens addressing the council. Anybody want to come forward and address the council tonight? All right, we have approval of minutes. We have truth and taxation minutes from December 4, 2018, and the regular meeting minutes of December 11, 2018.
Make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Gary. Consent agenda will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of issuing transit merchant license to Beth Holmes to operate a pop-up shop. B is approval of adopt SCDP Citizens Participation Plan and set a public hearing for January 22, 2019 for the SCDP rental rehab application. C is approval of resolution number 14991, resolution for business development infrastructure application for CDK, HTI, Uppenor Public Street Project. And B is claims appropriation and contract payments. Anybody have anything they want to pull off?
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad, approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Gary. Communications requests invitations, discussion of pillar project and presentation of the arts for public comment.
Mayor and council, we discussed this briefly at a workshop prior to our last council, or actually to our, at our second meeting in November. And I know we're looking to add this potential art as a part of our Main Street 2020 project. One of the requirements of that is to have a public comment period on any proposed public art. I think Morgan's going to be addressing the council tonight on behalf of the Public Arts Commission as they, I guess, present the proposed project, which would then in turn open up the 30-day comment period for any feedback from the public for the council to consider at a future council meeting.
Morgan?
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, council. Happy holidays. Morgan Baum, 925 Second Avenue, Southwest Hutchinson, and member of the Public Arts Commission. As Matt just said, that we're here tonight to present additional information about the Hutchinson Public Art Pillar Project that the Public Arts Commission is proposing for the Main Street 2020 reconstruction. As you said, we gave a lot of information during the workshop, so I'm just going to highlight some of the things that I found most exciting, and then the comment period will open up, and I can answer any questions that you guys have. So the goal of the project was to use the opportunity of reconstructing Main Street and to bring more art to our community. It's in line with the city's strategic plan to make Hutchinson a destination for recreation, art, and leisure. It's also in line with the Imagine Downtown Hutchinson project. And it's, you know, we're taking this time in 2020 to change the look of Main Street, to fix the sidewalks, to build infrastructure underneath, and it's also a really great opportunity to add art to our sidewalks. And so what we would like to do is create artwork that highlights some of the founding principles of Hutchinson and the things that matter most to the community, and to put art out where the public can see it readily as they walk down Main Street. So we worked with the city administration, with MINDOT, who is, you know, the driver of this street project, and with the Public Arts Commission and the Citizens Advisory Council to come up with a plan which we presented to you about a month ago. The first thing we had to do was find out where could we even put public art on Main Street. MINDOT has some pretty clear policies. It's long. I could give it to you if you need some sleeping material. And it tells you what public art can be on a highway and a MINDOT right-of-way street. And so thankfully, MINDOT identified quite a few spaces, about, I think there were eight in total, but there were four that really seemed like a good space for public art. And so we took those four spaces and we built out a plan. Now, Imagine Main Street, these four spaces are at northwest First Avenue, north, right by Dairy Queen. That's how I think of it, is what's it in front of? Right by Dairy Queen. And then the, on the south end of town, it would be by the post office on Third Avenue South. And then the two in the middle would be on Library Square on the east side of Main Street, and the other one would be on the west side in front of Citizens Bank. And these would be in the bumpouts in what MINDOT calls the opportunity spaces. So those are opportunities for art. And so the concept we arrived at was four pillars. And those four pillars will each have a separate theme. And so the themes would be service, humanity, stewardship, and education. We lay these out in more detail in the information on the city's website, but the service one really speaks to our community for all of the volunteers, our public safety officers, our veterans, and all of us who give back on a daily basis with our time and our resources. Humanity really ties into our citizenship, our faith, and our commitment to our community. Stewardship ties to our parks, to our environment, to all of us giving back and putting in place art that will last for generations to come. And education makes me smile every time because I think about how much wonderful education opportunities there are in Hutchinson, from our public school systems to Maplewood Academy, Ridgewater, our Montessori schools, our faith-led schools, and our continuing education opportunities. And so a pillar that highlights our education and commitment to education, I vote that one goes by Dairy Queen, but that's just me. So the four pillars would each have, would kind of own those themes. And so you can picture, each pillar will be approximately four feet high. They'll be 24-inch square, and they will be, the outside of the pillar would be made with the brick from Library Square to stay in line with our streetscaping. And on top of the pillars would be what we call top art, but that would be a bronze or a similar metal oak tree. And the Public Arts Commission arrived at the oak tree because it symbolizes strength, putting down roots, and it's really in line with our, the look and the feel of Hutchinson community, our parks. And we're also a tree city, the second oldest in the state of Minnesota, and we'll be celebrating 40 years as a tree city. So trees are really important to our daily life and our future. So setting in place four top art trees made out of strong, sturdy metal, and I like to picture their roots coming down and becoming part of the Hutchinson fabric and represented through art. The reason why we've brought this to the council and to the Citizen Advisory Committee and to MINDOT is because in order to do this, we need to fund the project. The overall project is estimated to cost around $75,000. We're asking for the council to commit $38,000 towards the building of the infrastructure. This would be part of the overall budget that you've already set aside for the Main Street 2020 streetscaping project. This is right next to the benches and the flowers, and this is streetscaping that would be there year-round. And then the Public Arts Commission would commit funding as well, and we would also go out and seek grant funding from the Southwest Minnesota Arts Council and the legacy funding. So no additional taxes would be needed to be raised to do this. So again, we would be sharing the cost, and we're looking for the council in January, too, or early February to support this request. One last thing that I'd like to say is, how are we going to find out what this art looks like? Because I don't have a pillar here, I don't have a drawing there, I'm just telling you about it and asking you to create it in your minds. We would go out to the artists in the area and ask them to give us a rendering of what they would like it to look like, so a call for art. And we would, we will put together a group from the community, from the Public Arts Commission, from the council, and the Citizen Advisory Committee to be the panel of judges that decides what the final art would look like, and then we would bring it back to council for final decision. So all this information is written up really nicely on the website, the city's website, and I can take any questions.
Just for the council, I'm not sure if we.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning, I'll show up on the website, but just for the council's knowledge and for the public's knowledge, there will be a link on our main homepage, I'm sure we'll probably put it up via social media as well, that will allow the public to go out and view the conceptual idea at this, at this time, along with the additional information. And then there'll be a, there'll be a form that the public can submit for comments that will, that will come into the city staff, which then will obviously in turn be made available to the council after the 30-day comment period has been made up, so. I know that's all been noted within the council packet, along with some of the potential design ideas, too.
I would just note that the comment form and information about it is on the Hutchinson Public Arts website, and it tells you, you know, you can print off the form and then submit it down here at City Hall, you can email it, there's a link for that, or mail it. And that'll be through January 31 of, I should say, 2019.
19.
Our second one. Get that updated, too.
Except, mayor and council, there's no obviously action required of you at this time. Just to simply note that this is going to be requested, there'll be a formal request for action from the council at a later time. I think we need to submit kind of some of our final recommendations to MINDOT probably in February, of which this potential will be a part of that, that concept of which will get passed on, so.
So the final decision on whether MINDOT allows the pillars to be located in the right-of-way or not comes maybe until May?
Probably the back, probably the back end of 19, I'm thinking, so, middle to third quarter, probably.
But they've been very supportive. We wouldn't have gotten to where we are without, without MINDOT and without Ken, who's not here to get applauded, but, and Matt and his team, because they've given us a lot of help along the way.
I personally like it. I think it's very nice. I like the values that you've placed. I think they are so, so much of our community are in those values, so I think it'll be really nice. It'll be a nice addition to our downtown, especially since Main Street's getting redone. We're only going to do this once. So.
Well, not for another 50 years. Once in our lifetime, right?
Once in my lifetime, yes.
Probably mine, too. All right, well, thank you guys so much.
Mary.
Thank you.
Review of council membership, members' appointments to the city boards and commissions.
Mayor and council, I know the mayor asked me to put this on the agenda, and I think he's done this maybe the last couple of years, or like you said, we've done this previously, but obviously with the turning of the new year and with Dave coming on board, we have our organizational meeting planned for the first part of January, and so we're in need of making committee, mission board appointments for 2019. I've included in your council packet the various standing committees, and we do have a couple temporary committees and appointments that are currently in place. I've noted those that John sat on will be vacated and will be in need of obviously replacement on those. But I think usually this gives an opportunity, opportunity between now and when the mayor submits his recommendations for committees for the council members to provide any feedback for him to take into consideration. I've included, obviously, where those appointments have been to over the last four years, so you can see if anybody's moved or changed. But I guess it's really open the floor to you guys.
Yeah, you know, on mine, joint planning might occur five or six times a year, if that, that occurs right down here. Mid-Minnesota Development Commission, that's about a half a dozen meetings a year, and that rotates between Wilmer, Olivia, Litchfield, or here. Otherwise, you know, Planning Commission, Joint Planning Commission, they're really tied together, probably, and understanding of planning and zoning ordinances is relatively important for those.
So actually, what I submitted to Matt so far was, I just put Dave in place of, in place of John and his, and I did actually, Mary asked if she could be removed off the radio board, so I put Dave on there. And I know Mary asked if she could be on the New Police Public Safety Facility Core Planning Group in place of John on that one. Otherwise, everybody else that I've talked to really likes the ones that they're on, and it sounds like they're really strongly committed to stay on those boards unless somebody's really, really wants to change.
The only thing I'd note on joint planning is that's a county position, so you get paid $25 or maybe $50 a meeting. And in order to go on that, then you have to submit, you have to fill out the application through the county, and you have to have your social security card. So if you don't have a social security card, you have to get one, because that required a trip for me to Mankato.
Oh, no.
But when I was in Mankato, I took photos of the small cell installation stuff. But it came in really handy yesterday when I applied for my new enhanced driver's license because I had to have my social security card then, too. So that's the only little glitch on that one. Mid-Minnesota Development Commission didn't want anything. That's $50 a meeting plus mileage, so.
So if nobody.
Was Dave okay with picking up all those?
Yep. I actually visited with him this afternoon, and he's kind of anxious to get his feet wet, as he would say, so, jump in with both feet, so.
And the first Mid-Minnesota Development Commission meeting was the 23rd of January. That was the next one. That will be in Wilmer, at the Health and Human Services Building.
And the Regional Radio Board doesn't meet every month either. I mean.
And I still get emails.
And they cancel it, and then they redo it, and then they might not have any for a couple of months, so that's not every month, so.
But that one, again, is in Mankato.
Yes.
Requires a trip to Mankato.
And we do have, you know, we took out the tree board in Southwest, and, you know, we were going to put in the sustainability board, which I think is going to probably fire up after we get the master park plan in place and stuff to matter.
I think there's, it's one of those things that unfortunately just got pushed off the side with kind of the busyness of the city, because I think there's actually some code changes that we need to first approve of before. I think we have, the groundwork's been, I remember we even discussed it at a council level, I think the groundwork's almost been set, we just got to more or less pull the trigger on it, so.
Because that would, that would take in like.
Creekside entries.
Creekside, the tree board, and lakes and rivers, right? Correct?
I think that's the kind of overarching, big picture with that board is really a sustainability at all levels of city governance. Obviously, when that board is established, then we'll be asking the council to appoint a member or two on that.
I guess, you know, I had sent you a note, Gary, that I'd be willing to do the Mid-Minnesota if Dave feels like he's getting too much. It's up to him if he wants to do it, though, that's fine. It was just something that I thought of, and the other one was on the resource allocation.
Yeah.
You know, I just thought that one's nice. I've always thought it's nice to have some rotation through there because you're, you understand more of the process of the project development as it goes forward.
Well, that, yeah. My thinking on that one was because of the Highway 15 reconstruction stuff, and, you know, me and Chad have been on that from the beginning, and I think we both would like to see, see our way through that. So, I don't know, Dave, do you have any injections about the Mid-Minnesota development?
Again, I'm fine if you want to do it, that's fine, but.
I realize there's a learning curve, but are you never too young to learn?
There's not much of a learning curve on that board. I mean, it's an Economic Development Commission, really, and if everybody remembers looking at their property taxes and there's something that says "other" on there, that's Mid-Minnesota Development Commission.
I think I can probably.
Okay.
I think that, but I run into problems with it.
No, it just looked like, you know, the planning, the joint planning, the radio board, now that's another one.
I mean, the big one's going to be Planning Commission, and you should really go to some classes on that. That's important, so.
Like you said, obviously, this will be in front of the council for consideration and action at your organizational meeting on January 7, so.
All righty. Have no unfinished business, new business. Resolution number 14992, resolution establishing location for traffic control devices, removal of no parking, school days, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Larson Street Southwest.
Mayor and council, actually following our previous council, our last council meeting, we had some more discussion regarding the parking restrictions around high school. We did receive a petition from the residents on Larson Street, be between Roberts Road and Leah Avenue. I believe actually all the residents on that street signed a petition to have those, those parking restriction signs removed. And so with consideration of the petition, I guess the resolution was brought forward for the council to consider adopting that, which would essentially remove those signs from Larson Street.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I would second that.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Gary. Resolution number 14980, resolution adopting 2019 fee schedule.
Mayor and council, I know we sent out the preliminary fee schedule to you in end of October. I think we discussed it briefly at our last meeting. There was a couple recommended changes, of which I think all but one was made. I think we're just with some vacation time around the holidays, we didn't get to the one regarding the alleys, and so we'll look to add that here come the first part of January, first part of the year. I know John did note, I think we have a kind of a duplication of permits, so I'd probably have you amend upon approval, but I think we have our rental fee listed twice, once for $20, and the other time for $10, and the current fee is $20, so I just think it was. I think under building inspections and got under permits, and I think we just forgot to remove it.
Yeah, it's listed under licenses actually twice as $10 a year, so I would make a motion that both of those be struck from licenses, because the fee is $20 a year.
And that's noted.
That's noted. That's now under planning and zoning fees at the top of the fee schedule.
Yeah, talking with Andy, I think it was just probably one of those that we added in, adjusted it and moved it, just forgot to eliminate it under one area, so. I would note the changes to the proposed fee schedule have been noted and read, so.
Make a motion to approve, and would it be all right to follow John's?
Yep.
Or you made that a motion, right?
Yeah, strike the rental inspection license fee under licenses on page 56 in our packet. I believe it is 56, yeah.
Which is, I believe, page, if there.
Yeah, it's. It's actually page nine.
Page nine of the fee schedule.
Nine of it. There's two places there.
Rental housing registration is listed twice there.
Sure. You made that a motion?
I made that, I make that a motion, yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion by John, second by Steve, who approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Gary. Resolution number 14977, resolution adopting 2019 conversation plan and position classification table. classification table and pay grid.
Mayor and council, this is our annual compensation plan. The only change to the plan from the previous year is a 2% shift in the grid. That was both reviewed and discussed at both the director level and at the wage committee level, and that's the recommendation that came from the wage committee. Just one thing, that doesn't mean that employees are given a 2% wage increase. You may recall, we have a performance base, so it's still based off the performance that you have here at the city, determined by your supervisor or your director. That does more or less, if you want to say, increase the earning capability of, to the entire grid by about 2%. So if anyone happens to fall below the baseline or the bottom of 80%, they would get bumped up to then whatever that new 80% is, the 2% increase. And then it just gives some earning potential from those to those that may get the max portion of the pay scale. But that's the only noted change to the compensation plan from the previous year's plan.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 14977.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mary, second by John, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary, resolution number 14993, resolution adopting 2019 seasonal temporary compensation plan.
Mayor and council, this is obviously similar to our regular employee, but this is our seasonal pay. The one noted change takes into account the changes in the minimum wage laws and that's been calculated into the scale for next year.
Just for informational purposes, about how many do we employ?
Fifty. Another time of year.
So that's the pool, aquatic center?
Yeah, so that's, you know, those, the extra staff that we bring in during the summer to help with mowing and trimming and the plantings includes skating rink attendants and...
Some help for engineering in the summer.
Yeah.
Covers a wide range.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 14993.
I'll second that.
Motion by John, second by Chad, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gary?
Some of that was driven, did you mention with the minimum wage?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hey, Matt, can we, we got to do these one at a time or?
I think Andy's going to come up and give you a summary and I think in the past, yes, if it's the desire of the council, you can do it all in one motion or if you want to do them individually, I guess that's...
The 2019 budget levy items.
Good evening, council.
What you've been waiting for, right, Andy?
Yes. The end of the year, setting up for next year.
Matt's not going to read the budget message first to us?
It's why I include it in the council packets.
Another one, if you're having trouble falling asleep.
It's actually, it's actually really good.
Yeah, I know. Yes, it is.
I did find one place where you left a two out.
I'm sure I probably did. It doesn't matter how many times you've read through that thing.
No, it was very good letter. Very, explains everything very well.
Yes, and this, this actually does get, but does get included in the budget book that gets published after actions, so.
Yep, the budget book is something I'm currently working on, so we'll, I'll publish that later in January and, but for tonight, we'll go through the budgets more in a summarized fashion. Matt had gone through them in more of a detailed fashion at the workshops and then touched on them at the truth and taxation meeting. Not much has changed from the truth and taxation meeting and I'll just touch on them as we go through each of these funds. Similar to last year, last year we did go through all of these, the budgets and the levies, and then passed them all in one vote. So I'm okay doing that this year again if you guys are okay. So the first fund we have is the liquor fund. Resolution number 14981 for the 2019 budget. Just some highlights, our revenues, $6,360,000 versus expenditures of $6,488,622, giving us a net loss for the year of $128,622. And the majority of that loss is related to depreciation expense. And since depreciation isn't a cash transaction, we can back that out of our net loss to arrive at a net loss in cash of $46,000, a little over $46,000 that's indicated at the bottom. Just a minor growth assumption in sales, about 1.8% is what we're projecting. It's a little under what our five-year average is of 3% per year, but we're seeing about 1.8% here in 2018, so we're down a little bit in 18. So other than that, about $656 was added to the expenditures since you saw this budget previously, and that's mainly due to some wages and benefits. And then $400 was added to professional services for a website audit of ADA compliance. So unless you have any questions, that's the 2019 liquor fund budget.
Just to clarify then, the debt services, the final payments for the expansion of the liquor store?
2020 will be our last payment. And then that will free up about $128,000 of cash within this fund. Water fund is resolution number 14982. We have total revenues of $3,111,000, expenditures of $4,140,611, giving us a net loss of $1,029,611. No rate increases in this utility for the year. Our last increase was in 2011. We're seeing some downward trends in our consumption, mainly with residential and our industrial users. So we've decreased our budget for residential by about $60,000 and industrial user by $50,000. Commercial is up about $10,000, so we did some adjustments on our, on our usage to bring them more in line with recent years' actuals. And then we did add about $3,000 in expenditures, and that was all in the wages and benefit category due to open enrollment changes. That was the only change in the budget since you last saw it. That's all I have for the water budget unless you have questions. Again, I guess at the, at the bottom, you can see the cash impact, even though we have a million dollar loss. Majority of that is depreciation at 1.1 million. And then we bring in our liquor fund payment on the debt, $59,000. That's really a balance sheet item that's not on our P and L anymore, so we're really showing $129,000 of cash flow for the year, bringing our cash balance to a little over 3.6 million.
And I would note too, we forgot to mention that with the liquor fund, the projected loss was, is a planned and budgeted one, although I don't know if we've actually lost money or earned the last of all.
Last year we did slightly, but yeah, right, it's, I fully expect to beat this. Sewer fund, where we have resolution number 14983, total revenues of $3,967,000 versus expenditures of $5,080,750, giving us a net loss of $1,113,750. And again, the majority of that loss is due to depreciation, a little, 1.25 million of depreciation in this fund. And then we add in our liquor fund principal payment from the balance sheet, $59,000. We have a cash flow for the year of about $195,000. Add that to our cash balance from 2017 and we're looking a little above 6.2 million in cash in this fund by the end of 2019. And again, similar to water fund, there are no rate increases in this utility for 2019. The last increase was in 2011. And similar to the water budget, we're projecting residential, commercial and industrial flow down in each one of those categories, and that's just based on the recent trends here over the last few years. Industrial is the big one at about $125,000 below the 2008 level, and that's mainly due to one industrial user that we've talked about in previous meetings.
You know, and I'll just note, and I know this has been a topic of discussion amongst ourselves, especially when it comes to the DNR and some of their conservation rate requirements. You know, I would note, you know, we're building 25 to 30 homes a year and we're still seeing our usage go down. And so it's just interesting that we've got an entity out there telling us we need to come up with a different rate structure, but we're...
To conserve.
To conserve usage and we're actually seeing that take place without even having that rate structure in place.
One thing about the local sales tax, I see you've budgeted a little increase in that with our financials at the end of the year or at the end of the packet, you know, that we have an amount through November. Is that actually November's or is that?
No, that's mainly through September.
Okay. So when it's all said and done, you know, when we see the final budget for the year, will that have the actual 2018 sales tax dollars included in that?
Correct. That'll, that'll be more in the February timeframe when we receive that data from the state. But yeah, it will be in the final version. We have our stormwater fund budget, resolution number 14984. We have total revenues of $967,300 versus expenditures of $1,230,925, giving us a net loss of $263,625. This fund does have a rate increase of 3%, a user rate increase, which is consistent with the past few years. And there was about $14,000 of expense added to this budget since the truth and taxation meeting. $3,000 of that is related to the open enrollment changes and then $11,000 is related to some debt assumptions. I've changed the debt on the new street sweeper from a seven-year debt schedule to a five-year more to be in line with the useful life. So that added about $11,000 to the debt. Other than that, our new GO debt from the Linden Park Stormwater Pond is factored into this budget. Our old GO debt falls off after the February 2019 principal payment and then the new GO debt is interest only for 2019 with the first principal payment in 2020. Any questions on the stormwater fund? Resolution number 14985 for our 2019 refuse fund budget. We have total revenues of $1,240,100 versus expenditures of $1,438,615, giving us a net loss of $198,515. You can see down at the bottom, the cash flow impact, we're a little heavier in capital outlay this year. In fact, at that $221,500 that we are budgeting, $80,000 of that is related to the source separated software for our composting vessels that most likely won't occur. So our capital is a little inflated this year and I would expect we would beat this budget simply because of that. So even with that $80,000 factored in here, we're showing a net cash deficit for the year of $52,500 or so, and then we should end up somewhere just south of 1.4 million in cash balance within this fund, so very healthy fund yet. No rate increases in this utility. The last increase was in 2008 and we've only, actually, we've decreased our expenditures since the truth and taxation meeting by about $3,000. And that was mainly due to transferring some fuel expense out of this fund and over to the compost fund. They've traditionally allocated the fuel, it's hard to budget for the fuel, to the two funds since the operations are so close. So it's always been a 75% split of the fuel to compost, 25% to refuse. Well, with the compost production changing, the 75, 25 didn't make sense anymore. We were allocating too much fuel to the refuse fund for what they were really using in their operations. So what you're going to see, we decreased fuel, $5,000 in this fund and increased fuel, $5,000 in the compost fund. Then we added $2,000 of travel expense to this refuse fund budget for the Green Corps member who will be traveling out of state in January of 2019. Any questions with the refuse fund? The compost fund, resolution number 14986, total revenues $2,504,420. We have our expenditures at $2,632,202, giving us a net loss of $127,782. And similar to the other funds, depreciation is the big driver behind that net, net loss. We back that out. And this fund has something unique the other funds don't have with our cost of goods on our product. We actually include a 10% markup for administrative overhead, so I have to back that out as well or add that back in. So our cash flow is adjusted for depreciation and this 10% markup, giving us a cash, cash, positive cash flow of $163,000 roughly. And then we should end the year above 2.2 million in cash balance within this fund as well. Within the compost fund, we added almost $6,000 in expenditures since the truth and taxation meeting and $5,000 was due to that fuel that I talked about under the refuse fund, and then we added $800 to the professional services line item.
So Andy, on fuel, do we, do we contract for fuel or do we, I mean, because gas is below $2 a gallon now.
Right, yeah, we, we look for the best bidder. Usually it's either Hutch Co-op or I forget the other guy we use, but it's all delivered bulk, bulk fuel.
Right.
Mostly diesel to run all the equipment out there in the bagging line.
So it's a one-time purchase and then when you're running low, you bid again or, or you just have a yearly contract?
Yeah, I think the way Andy does it is similar to Hats. They get bids every time they need a refueling, just as prices change. And what we see at Hats is it changes maybe every other time we're using one vendor versus the other. Any questions on the compost fund? If not, we'll move on to the general fund, resolution number 14987. We have total revenues of $13,124,793 and our expenditures are at that same amount, giving us a balanced budget. Our budget is balanced with a 4% tax levy increase. And if you recall from the truth and taxation meeting, we did add $50,000 of expenditure to fund our fleet, our vehicles and equipment, and we also reduced our transfer in from the self-insurance fund. That transfer funds our HSA contributions, the city's contributions to the employees' HSA accounts. So we reduced that transfer by $28,000 since that self-insurance fund won't be able to absorb those transfers for the next four to five years, so we're reducing our reliance on the self-insurance fund. So those two items, $78,000 alone, that's about a 1.6% levy increase out of that 4%. Without those two items, we'd be down in the 2.4, mid-2s, which is right in line with inflation in the CPI.
You mentioned the equipment fund, that's the first time that's gone up.
Since 2011.
2011, right.
And I noted that in my budget message, you know, we, part of our, you know, this 4% is in the general fund, but when you look at their overall city impact, it's about 2.8%. And some of that is to really relieve potential future needs for future tax levy increases, you know, so as we always talk about, we plan longer than just next year. We're constantly thinking beyond the year that we're in or the year that's coming up. And so that's part of what we're doing now is to really prepare, so future levies or future budget impacts aren't necessarily felt at a... future budget impacts aren't necessarily felt at as high a level as it could be.
So the levy for the general fund has increased about 566 bucks since the Truth and Taxation Meeting. So very minor changes to the general fund. Any questions with the general fund budget? If not, we'll move on to the tax levy for the city, resolution number 14988. We have a general fund tax levy of $5,110,005. Again, that's a 4% increase. And then we have our debt levy at $2,200, I'm sorry, $2,200,000. And there's no increase in the debt levy. It's been at that level for four years now, I believe, and likely no increase until the year 2023. So overall, our total levy for 2019 is at $7,310,005. And as Matt indicated, that's a 2.8% increase from the 2018 levy. Our next resolution, 14989. This is for the HRA tax levy. They're requesting $186,023. That's an 8.6% increase from the prior year levy. These tax dollars fund the HRA operations and they've requested the maximum amount allowable by state statute. The EDA tax levy, resolution 14990. They're asking for $182,303. That's a 7.7% increase from the 2018 levy. And again, this levy funds the operating expenses for the EDA. And like the HRA, they've requested the maximum amount that's allowable per state statute. And then this last slide here basically shows where we were sitting back in September for our levies. We were looking at a 3.1% levy for the city and then our EDA and HRA levies bringing the total tax increase to 3.3%. And now here before you tonight, we're looking at a 2.8% for the city, 3.0% overall tax levy increase. So that's all I have for you tonight on the budgets and tax levies. After tonight, I'll need to certify these levies to the county tomorrow and to the state as well. And then they're finalized after that.
Can just, from the process standpoint, a reminder that this is, what, the fifth time?
If we want to include this as a meeting, this would technically be the sixth time.
Sixth time.
No, you know, and I think it's important for the public. You know, I appreciate the turnout that we had for the Truth and Taxation, but that was really the backend of our planning process. That was, you know, our fifth meeting regarding the proposed budget. Really our budgets, discussion on those budgets began in May with our, you know, final discussions taking place in December. And so, you know, it's really a six to eight month process when you're involved with the staff, the different committees, obviously the council and some of the council committees that you guys sit on, everything from, you know, goals and objectives to where we are at the end of the year, compile the process that we, and with today. As I've shared in the past, I think it's one of the biggest policy decisions that gets in front of the council on a yearly basis. It does really help drive where we go, not only next year, but into the years to come when it comes to obviously where we focus our spending on. So like I said, Andy will have the budget book. That really goes into a lot more details than even tonight and ends up being about 100, 150 pages.
Yeah, I'm adding a little more detail this year, explaining some processes more, explaining our fund structure. So I think I'm upwards of 175 pages, which hopefully someone reads.
And then there's the financial report at the end of the year. So it's always kind of lagging, but there's a ton of information in there too.
Correct.
So we can do this with one motion?
It's the desire of the council. You could, I would just simply, the motion would be to, if you want to do it in one motion, it would be the motion to approve the various resolutions listed out.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2019 budget levy items A through J.
I will second that motion.
That is resolutions 14981 through 14990.
Correct.
Motion by Mary and second by John?
John, John first.
John, sorry. Motion by John, second by Mary to approve the 2019 budget levy items. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Five-year.
Just, just to clarify those resolutions, those were the budgets or did that also?
Budget and the last, the last three resolutions are levies.
Moving on, five-year capital improvement plan.
Mayor and council in front of you is the five-year CIP. I think there's been a couple minor changes since the last time you looked at it. I don't think it was anything significant, but this is, once again, I think, you know, this is one of those documents that we started back in May and was originally presented to you in, in August. And these are the larger capital items that include everything from stream projects to your facilities and to other infrastructure improvements throughout our equipment vehicles throughout the entire organization.
Make a motion to approve. Would just ask that sometime during the year, we have a follow-up, just a review of the facility plan as well as the small fleet and equipment plan.
Actually going to bring it up at the next directors meeting.
I'll second Steve's motion.
Motion by Steve, second by John to approve the five-year CIP plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried. Governance, we have Public Arts Commission minutes from November 8th, 2018. Hutchinson-Housen redevelopment authority minute, board minutes from November 20th, 2018. City of Hutchinson financial report and investment report for November 2018.
Just curious if you know what the public, in the HRA, item nine was rental assistant demonstration, public housing application. Just wondering, is that a new program that's being looked at or maybe check with?
I'm not completely familiar. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's for the, the, for.
The apartments?
Yeah, yeah. That's for, actually for Dale Street.
South Dale Street because, yeah, there were income limitations. They had to have a certain percentage of Jones.
That's on.
So one on the corner of Dale and.
Yeah, right across from Hanson gravel there. Yeah, that's what that one's for, Steve.
Okay.
And it needs some love.
DLC.
Yes.
Anything else, Steve? Andy, you have anything else for us tonight?
We received our workers' comp rates for 2019. Just a little too late to factor into the budgets, but it was positive. We're seeing our rates go down slightly. So with workers' comp rates, it's based on gross wages. So as our gross wages go up, our workers' comp goes up automatically. But with the rate reduction, it should offset our salary increases and we should have a push basically from our 2018 workers' comp expense. So that's a positive.
All right. Steve, let's start with you tonight.
Had some discussion about parking permits. Met with Matt and the chief and had two streets or sections of streets come in to petition to remove them. And we also had the survey included, you know, in the packet. I think it's important to remember, and then the survey showed that, that part of the emphasis was on some of the complaints, especially on the streets right by the school, older and stony point. And that was very strong support for doing something. The other streets, you know, the farther out, it was more, it's a concern with students moving out, finding other places to park and still be there. So, you know, and then again, you see that kind of reflected in the survey, not quite as strong a support or different types of options. I think it's still, I still like what's been done to help address, you know, the complaints that came in. I know that they have pushed out. We have somebody from K Street now. I don't know if you want to talk about what you're seeing or not, but it does look like students have now parked on that street. And, and so if there was a permit option, I don't know if that might appeal to you more than, you know.
Oh, come up and talk, Al. Give your name.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but since you're here.
Yeah, it, it doesn't.
Name and address, please.
Alan Benusa and I'm at 425 K Street.
Thank you.
And I didn't really expect to come up here. My daughter is in government class.
Well, maybe she should be up here.
But it does appear that the, that the high schoolers have discovered that as their, as their parking options have shrunken, they have discovered where the new parking options are. So, yeah, now our block has now seen an increased level of, of parking activity. And, you know, I'm hoping maybe when this group of seniors graduate from high school and maybe the problem will go away. I'm not sure. It, it's kind of odd that we didn't have a problem before and we realized with the school remodeling that everybody was fine with the students parking on the streets because there was no other option for them. And we hope, and I'm not sure why it's a problem this year, you know, we hope that it would just sort of take care of itself without any, without needing any signs, any anything, you know, hopefully it would. But we'll see.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
I guess, you know, I would just, my preference right now would be to just to keep it the way it is. If there are certain streets that don't like it, you know, they could petition to have them removed. But then maybe after a year, after a full cycle, see what's happening then. And we could possibly look at a permit situation then. I did do some research a little bit and, you know, the $50, I believe that the school charges, that's cheap compared to some of the city schools are, are over $200 a year.
And that's not a new thing for the school. They've done it for what, like 15 years already? I mean, it's not like all of a sudden this year they said, you're paying $50.
It might've been going up a little bit in there, but still they've been charging a fee for quite a while. There's some communities that do have permit option around, especially around school areas. So again, but that's a mix. There's other ones that don't. So, but I think just letting it play out and see how things get adjusted, it seems to make some sense for now. And then the other thing, saw in the leader and went up to look, you know, a number of ash trees got removed from North Woods Park. That was really around the one playground area there. There was about a dozen trees that everything got taken out. I was a little surprised just thinking maybe there would be a few that would be left for shade and, you know, give the other ones that get planted a time to diversify. So kind of goes back to the discussion we had before about what the plan is with now that EAB has been declared a nuisance. And then finally, kind of along the same lines, I was down on the trail last week out for a walk and saw the Stormwater Pond by the pedestrian bridge. Had a lot of clear cutting that was happening with some of the shrubs, some of the trees and just, I guess I was a little surprised that it was so drastic of a, all the brush, you know, and shrubs.
Inside the pond?
No, on the banks. So there are some trees that got left more. There are some larger trees that got left. Some did get removed.
And the DNR?
Um, I'm not sure. Yeah.
Where is that again, location?
By the pedestrian bridge behind Shopko. And I don't know if some of the other ones are getting worked on or. And maybe the idea is that, you know, like some of this is dogwoods. Maybe they'll grow up again. I don't know.
I know there's certain things when it comes to just maintenance and I can't remember what the requirement is with the trees and stuff going on of it, but I'm not familiar with it. So.
Yeah. So again, just surprised. It was more clear cut around there. It's just trimming or removing some, but leaving some of the others. So that's all. Thanks.
Chad?
I don't have anything. Happy holidays to everybody.
Mary?
Well, first of all, this is John's last meeting with us. So I want to thank you, John, for serving. And we haven't always agreed on things, but we've always maintained a good relationship.
Sure.
And I think that's what sitting on council is about. So I thank John for his service and I wish him well.
I'm going to Disney World.
With new socks and things everywhere, right? All right. Just happy holidays. Enjoy the new year. Be safe. So and 2019 is just around the corner. So enjoy.
Thanks, Mary. John?
Well, I mean, yeah, just, you know, thank you. I, it's a privilege to serve and, you know, there's responsibilities associated with that, but that's all right. The thing I want to note, I don't know if anybody heard, I know that Brian, our new executive director at McLeod County Historical Society, did make an announcement, but the McLeod County Historical Society got a significant donation. And so there will be a 4,400 square foot addition put on the west side of the historical society starting this spring sometime.
Oh geez.
That's quite a donation.
Yeah. So I, I'm not allowed to tell you how much the donation was. It was significant.
So what new space be used for?
Well, the whole gallery will be rearranged. I know that Alice Chalmers tractor is going back to the Smithsonian Institute. That won't be in there anymore. There will be a portion of it that's going to be dedicated to a musical band or whatever that used to play around here. I believe that you'll see some of it directed to Little Crow and the Dakota Sioux and Sioux uprising. So I think you can anticipate significant changes in there. The displays have gotten relatively stale over the years. And so that's the vision. You know, we're getting near to completion on the $435,000 HVAC upgrade on the building. That will actually be, probably be completed in mid-January, we're hoping. And it's all been painted out on the inside. It's got new windows in it. So, but yeah, it was very much a surprise. But. So, but, yeah, it was very much a surprise, but the money will come in handy. It was about, the place was done in 1984, so it's about time that it had a face left. But otherwise, thank you for letting me serve this community.
We give you a round of applause.
Sure.
Ma'am?
Couple things. Offices are closed Tuesday, obviously, with the New Year's. Obviously, just a reminder, too, of our organizational meeting on Monday. It's at 8:30 in the morning. You know, Gary talked with me today, but Mary, you and Gary are interested in going to that conference. I know Steve is going to be going as well, and Dave's going for the newly elected, so I just want to make sure to get you guys registered for that, for the Experienced Officials And then, John, I just want to say thank you as well. Both you and I came on at the same time, and so I appreciate the...
And Tom wants me to give you, me to give you my iPad.
Yep. I was going to say that was the... It's one of my last duties is to grab your iPad from you, but I just want to thank you for your dedication. Like I said, you know, for those of us that spend our career working here, that's what we ask for from our elected officials, is to really dedicate their time serving their community and giving us direction, and you did that, so I want to thank you for your time on the council. Yep, need to grab your iPad when we're done, so.
No, it's all ready.
That's it for me.
All right. Yep. Well, John, yes, last meeting, thank you for your service. Thank you for your previous service in the Navy, too. So it's, wish you well, and maybe see you back again someday.
Maybe, who knows? Maybe Plan Commission or something.
Yeah, all righty.
You know, it was, I told you the story about the Source Security Card and getting my license, and the new thing on the, on the enhanced ID was that I was able to bring in my DD 214 and then get my license stamped as a veteran. So that was something that was new.
Well, thank you again, and everybody be safe New Years, and we'll see you next year.
Oh, wait, and I should say, it's my birthday today, too.
Happy birthday.
Oh, wow. Big day.
Big day.
Is it?
Yeah. Forty-six.
Yeah, right.
Wait, I'm dyslexic.
And I'm forty-seven.
John, you want to do the honors?
I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'll second.
Motion by John, second by Chad to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.